Good afternoon, everyone that are here with the Senate on this Saturday. And the Senate 21st Northern Maranas Commonwealth Legislature for Regular Session 2020, on their second special call of the session today, Saturday, September 26, 2020, at the Senate Chamber at 1:45 PM. Today is now called to order. Let us all rise for a moment of silent prayer. Madam Clerk, can you go to the roll, please?
Senator Borja.
Here.
Mr. President.
Here.
Senator Hafschneider. Senator Iggy Somar.
Here.
Senator Manglotnia. Senator Kirua. Senator Sablon.
Present.
Senator Santos. Mr. President, eight members are present, one absent.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. With eight members present constitute our necessary quorum to conduct this special session today. And I want the record to reflect that Senator Borja issued by excuse for some medical reason. And with us through Zoom mode, Senator Iggy Somar, thank you for making your time at home to join us in this special session for today. Public comments? Anyone from the public would like to make any comments before we proceed with the order business? Please take your name for the record. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mr. President and honorable members of the Senate. I am Sonia Camacho. I am the Director of Courts. And I am here on behalf of Chief Justice Alexandria C. Castro and Presiding Judge Roberto Sino Raja. I am here for your deliberation and discussions on House Bill 21-124, SD1. And we'd like to bring to your attention a particular matter with regard to Section 302, Page 19, Line 12. We'd like to respectfully request that due to the NMI judiciary's recent passage of the Northern Mariana Islands Judiciary Procurement Regulations, that the words "NMI judiciary" be inserted in the exemptions stated in that line. The Presiding Judge and the Chief Justice did submit a letter earlier to this honorable body. However, if the committee and the Senate as a whole would like for us to submit again, we can do so. And in closing, I would like to thank the Chairman of the Fiscal Affairs Committee and his committee members for considering the requests of the judiciary during a very unforeseen time in our Commonwealth. And we understand the work, the hard work that the committee has and the Senate as a whole has to do today. Sidoz Massey.
Thank you, Ms. Camacho. Chair, make sure that the request is noted when we come to the bill. Floor leader? Or anymore, anyone else from the public? If none, recognize floor leader.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. President, since there are no items on Item C through O, if no objections from the members, I move that we go down to view calendar so that we can dispose of the bill that is on final reading. So move.
Those in favor of the motion provided by the floor leader to move down to, from Item C all the way down to Item O, and we go directly to Item P? Say aye. Those opposed, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries? Okay, floor leader, we are now on Item P of our agenda.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. President, on bill calendar, a motion for the passage of House Bill 21-124 in the form of SD1 on final reading to make appropriations for the operations and activities of the government of the Commonwealth of the Northern Mariana Islands, its agencies, instrumentalities, and independent programs, and to provide budget authority for government corporations for fiscal year 2021 and for other purposes. So move.
Second.
There's a motion that have been seconded for the final reading on House Bill Number 21-124 in the form of SD1. Discussion on the motion. Chairman, recognize?
Buenas tardes. Para todos y manejé gini. It's President members, members of the public, both here in the chamber and the viewing public. I appreciate the efforts through this exercise and the support from the members of the Senate. And I also like to recognize the hard work and patience of the staff, the OB staff, the office staff, for all their support. Equally important to mention the cooperation from the administration by way of Secretary of Department of Finance, Dave Attell, and his staff. Without these components of cooperation, we would not be here today to consider our draft legislation for fiscal year 2021. So if I may, Mr. President, I want to just read out just a short prepared remarks narrative, just the history of this budget bill before us. The governor, of course, was mandated by Constitution to submit a proposal budget for the fiscal year in April. And then he subsequently submitted a revised in July. The House passed their version on August 13. Received it on August 14. And today, September 26, it's a mere month and a half for your committee in the Senate to review, to seek guidance, information with regards to fund status, earmarks, revolving funds, constitutional mandates, statutory mandates, and all of the above, Mr. President. And I must repeat, we got the budget in the Senate in August 14. And today is September 26. It's a mere a month and a half for the Senate to work on this. In my prepared remarks, Mr. President, I wanted to go ahead and start with this, that on March 4, 2020, Governor Torres had established the Governor's Fiscal Response Task Force in collaboration with the Graduate School USA to thoroughly assess and provide alternative solutions to address the financial climate of the CNMI. The initial product derived from this task force was the CNMI's Fiscal Response Briefing entitled "Facing the Challenge", colon, addressing the CNMI's financial crisis or fiscal crisis. However, due to the unanticipated threat of COVID-19's presence in our community that shook this Commonwealth and redirected immediate focus of what limited resources the Commonwealth had in both financial means and essential personnel to safeguard and protect our community against the unprecedented threat of this life-threatening virus. Understanding the importance of streamlining the financing of the government, the administration, and the Governor Financial Task Force to continue the next phase of addressing the economic needs of our islands through the scheduling of the CNMI Fiscal Crisis Response Summit held in April 23 and 28, 2020. Along with many of us in the community, business partners, and active members and involuntaires in our community, your Senate Fiscal Affairs was actively involved in the discussions of this very critical discussion. For the very first time, the financial books were opened and evaluated. The discussion was honest. Some favorable solutions were offered and acknowledged as a potential revenue resource or source or a cost-saving measure, while some unfavorable and tough solutions were considered and heavily discussed, weighing out what would be the best approach to aid our community during this unparalleled time. Taking all matters discussed into serious consideration, coupled with our limited revenue resource, and more importantly, with the implementation of the furlough termination process on our government employees, with the fiscal year 2021 budget under review in the Senate and under your guidance, Mr. President, your committee pushed through in identifying alternative revenue sources and tapping into accounts never done before by this legislative body. And I repeat, we pushed through in identifying alternative revenue sources and tapping into accounts never done before by this legislative body. Extreme and dire situation call for creative and bold and never-before-seen action. As your Chairman of this committee, in close collaboration, in numerous open discussion with the Secretary of Finance, as we took the unfamiliar journey identifying funding sources to aid our government, such as the suspension of earmarks, allowing departments to really tap into their revolving funds, and authorizing the use of secure reimbursement funds. I stand by the product of that. My committee worked tirelessly. Number one, to ensure our essential employees remain at 80 hours as we continue to fight this war against COVID-19 as one Mariana's. Number two, that our government employees maintain a work schedule of 64 hours. Number three, to ensure that once additional funding is available in the CNMI, that our government have the flexibility to bring back our furloughed employees. And number four, to provide additional funding to our educational institutions during a time when our youth are being expected to adjust to a new norm or form of learning, and backing up our dedicated teachers who go above and beyond despite their personal fears and anxieties in addressing the education needs of each child in our school system. Number five, to provide additional funding to our vocational institution, the Northern Marana's Technical Institute, in hopes that their commitment to expand the CNMI labor workforce in specialized fields are to be extended to all residents of Rotan, Tinian, and Saipan. To provide funding as our local matching obligation to supplement our medical Medicaid program to ensure that our people do not lose healthcare coverage. Number seven, to provide financial support to the medical referral program as it transition under the wing of the CHCC this fiscal year. But of course, that last statement, Mr. President, was striking out. The committee worked with administration, and they decided to not put more pressure on CHCC to allow the status quo. Number eight, and to provide funding for our senatorial districts of Rotan, Tinian, who were, and I repeat, who were unfairly cut with the implementation of the proportionate reduction. Number nine, in the event that this fiscal year, the CNMI governance sees with a deficit reduction, that we provide clear guidance on how these cuts be made to ensure that the continued service be provided to our community. Mr. President, each budget season, the discussions are not easy. It's never easy. However, with everything that transpired earlier this year and with the unexpected outcome of this COVID-19 pandemic, your committee on fiscal affairs worked endlessly in hopes that we can continue to provide adequate public service to our community while placing education, healthcare, and public safety on the forefront. And Mr. President, on behalf of the fiscal affairs, we continue to recognize that the first responders, the first-line agents, the personnel are very much recognized in this product. I also would like to mention that very unusual, but a typical process where we actually, what we call extended the olive branch to our counterpart in the House to look at the draft Senate, Senate draft. And they agreed with the provisions. They agreed with the provisions that the Senate is offering. As a matter of fact, they even make some suggestive provision change. And we recognize that, and we incorporate it in this product. So I hope that they accept a product that is worked tirelessly, that is put together with a combined effort from the committee and everyone that's involved, and that we can move ahead with the disposal and signature by our governor before the end of the fiscal year. Thank you, Mr. President. I yield back.
Thank you, Chairman Zook. Any other members who would like to make any? Chair to floor, recognize?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have here a floor amendment. I ask the Sarge if he can provide copies to all the members. This is a floor amendment to attempt to address the Commonwealth Healthcare Corporation utility payments as well as the public school system. And please bear with me as I try to explain the copies that are being provided. The first part of the amendment on page 22, line 4, add after the last sentence to read as follows. Provided that within 60 days after the enactment of this act, the governor shall reprogram funds in the amount of $3 million for Commonwealth Healthcare Corporation utility payments for within the executive branch. Number two, for this amendment, reduce legislative appropriation in the total amount of $500,000 to give the same amount to medical referral services under independent programs. The $500,000 legislative reduction is as follows. $400,000 taken proportionately from House and Senate members' allocation, and $100,000 from House and Senate leadership accounts, $50,000 from each House. And number three, I mean, the third amendment, I know I put it in in pen because before the session, I talked to Mr. Tormore, and I realized that that's something that I need to address, that we need to address. It will have the same language as number one, that says, "Provided that within 60 days after the enactment of this act, the governor shall reprogram funds in the amount of $40, $4 million for public school system." That will be the third part of this amendment. Copies have been provided, and I so move. Any second?
Any second to the floor amendment?
Mr. President.
The chair to floor.
I realize there's no floor amendment, but let me explain the reason for this. In this budget, Mr. President, unlike from the House, the Senate on page 22 actually gave the governor unlimited authority to reprogram funds from within the fiscal year 2021. And this is, this is one way of addressing executive branch departments and public services under the executive branch. Because, I understand, because of limited time, that we have pretty much given this to the governor so that he can, within his executive branch, review the critical needs for the other agencies. But as we all know, that this very language, just this very language on page 22 pretty much can negate everything that we pass today. No matter what we pass today, this very language brings us back to square one. And it is for that reason that we need an amendment like this to ensure that at a minimum, $3 million more will be identified, and we're giving the governor 60 days to do so. The legislature, because of the, in five days, we might have a shutdown, is handing that authority to the governor. So I'm saying, let's give the governor 60 days, look over the numbers. And it is not only limited to within the funds that we have appropriated. It can include outside sources. It can include other sources out there, CIP funding that you can use, what you call that, compact impact funding, other sources the governor will just have to identify within 60 days. Since there's no second, Mr. President, I don't know. I have three other amendments, and I would just like to ask for the understanding of the members. This one, I'm going to ask the Sergeant-at-Arm to please pass. This amendment I am offering is for inter-island medical referral and student housing stipend for the First Senatorial District. And on page one, I mean, on page 31, line 16, a new subsection B shall be added to read as follows. Provided that out of the operation funds appropriated to the First Senatorial District, $250,000 for inter-island medical referral lodging accommodation, medical subsistence, and stipend for Rotan patients and escorts on Saipan, and an additional $50,000 for housing stipends for Rotan students attending Northern Marana's College on Saipan shall be allocated by the mayor. This is a floor amendment, and it will not touch any appropriation, but under the First Senatorial District, I realize that under the First Senatorial District, the additional funding given to the First Senatorial District was all lump sum under operation. And so this would further provide that of that lump sum, $300,000, $250,000 for inter-island medical referral, and $50,000 for housing stipend for Rotan students at NMC will be allocated. And I so move at this point, Mr. President. Do you have a second?
Any second?
I just want to say, Mr. President, that as you know, just last, a week and a half ago, the Secretary of Finance came out and said that the money that we depend on for inter-island medical referral and other programs like student housing are coming from the casino license fee. And I'm not asking for additional casino license fee because we know the story about that, but I'm asking for the money that they owe us in the amount of $2 million. As I've stated in the past, Tinian's $2 million has already been granted to the Second Senatorial District. 4.6 of the $11 million from the casino license agreement has already been allotted to the Third Senatorial District. Today, we have zero because of the $290 that they have applied under Public Law 21-10. We now do not owe anything to the Finance Department, yet we are unable to provide the inter-island medical referrals, stipend, and subsistence to our patients and for programs like housing for our students. So this is the only source, and if we do not include this today, we're not going to be talking about future funding for medical referral. And I hope that that could be something that the body can reconsider. It's coming only from the First Senatorial District allotment. So again, I re-motion for its discussion.
Any second?
Mr. President, I ask the members to bear with me. I have a third amendment. And this third amendment is to address the 25% retirees pension payment. The floor amendment, I ask the Sarge to please pass the copies, copies of the amendment. This amendment is very straightforward. On page 46, line 3 of Senate Draft 1, page 46, line 3. Page 46, line 3, I put it under this section because this section addresses the 25% retirees pension. And I was reading the language for this. And, Mr. President, the present language as it is depends on the $25 million loan from Bank of Guam. But as we heard from the Secretary of Finance himself, 24 million of that has gone to the settlement fund. And I believe this is what he says, and I hope it's true, that it goes to ABGA payment, the alternative payment for the percentage adjustment. And so there's really nothing there. Although the language here is nice and beautifully worded, there's really nothing there to depend on for 25%. And the other part of the language there says that the governor can reprogram any funding source under the executive branch if there's no money to pay the 25%. Did we see what happened a month or two ago when they, when they did not pay pre-retiree's pension of the 25%? He had the same authority, but he couldn't do it. So the amendment that I'm offering is on page 46, line 3, a new subsection C to add to those two shall be added, and it shall read as follows. Notwithstanding Public Law 20-10 or any other law to the contrary, should the special casino revenue tax account be insufficient to cover the payment of 25% of class members' school benefits, the money collected for the application of an exclusive license pursuant to 4CMC, subsection 2306, shall be proportionately reduced from the earmarks of the First, Second, and Senatorial Districts to ensure that the retirees get their additional 25% benefits. I so move, Mr. President.
Any second?
Mr. President, let me explain again and hope there can be a reconsideration. This same amendment I offered last year, and I heard the good Senator Sixto Iggy Somar said that he supported this amendment, but that the Senate was going to work on a permanent, more permanent amendment. And that more permanent amendment, I was under the assumption, was something similar to House Bill 21-76 to give our retirees the $15 million annual casino license fee. And of course, we all know that, it's still sitting in the Senate. So this one is only to temporarily, for the fiscal year, in case there's no funding to allow for the temporary suspension so that we can cover the 25%. And I humbly ask the members for their consideration for this amendment so that we do not see again our elders, those who have been around a long time working and sacrificing over the years, they do not have to worry about their 25%. So move for reconsideration.
Any second?
Mr. President, finally, I have a last amendment here. And I really don't understand why, why we cannot agree on this amendment if we do not agree. We know what a situation with the casino license fee, the casino license, the casino project now. We all know the situation. We don't have to discuss in detail the situation there. The story today is, they don't want to pay. They don't have money to pay for the casino license fee. They want to amend it, extend their project deadline. And then now, they're coming back, and now they're saying, okay, we'll pay 7.5 million of this year, and next year, the 15 million, forgive us, the 7.5. Next year, we'll pay another 7.5, and one year later, we'll pay another 7.5. In other words, you're going to pay 21-some million, which of the 30-some million over two years, and you're getting a discount of $7 million. At least, the good news is, we know that money is coming. We know that money is coming. So I don't think it's a waste of time to pass something along this amendment. And I ask the Sarge to please pass a copy of this. This is to amend, page 38, line 19. This is to amend, page thirty-eight, line nineteen. And it's coming right up on that section where we asked that there be reporting requirements for the Commonwealth Healthcare Corporation report. So I think it's germane, it's pertinent to this section. And it should read, Development Plan Advisory Committee Report. Not later than ninety days after the date of the enactment of this act, the Development Plan Advisory Committee, D-PAC, established under the Casino License Agreement between the Commonwealth Lottery Commission and the Imperial Pacific International LLC, shall submit to the Speaker of the House of Representatives and the President of the Senate a report on the status of project, issues of concern, and compliance with respective schedules and license requirements. Mr. President, this amendment is so critical today. We are the only body that can sanction any amendment to the Casino License Agreement, and we know that IPI keeps knocking at the governor's office, but nothing can happen without the legislature approving that. And how can we, as members, feel comfortable in coming to a table to discuss about how to get a Plan B for our casino? We cannot even get a report from the body, D-PAC, created under the license agreement by former Governor Eloy Inos, demanding that this D-PAC be created. And by the way, four hundred thousand of their salary, we don't pay a penny. It's coming from IPI, and that's clearly spelled out in the Casino License Agreement. And the task that they are asked to do is exactly what I'm reading from here. I took this word for word from the Casino License Agreement. I quote, "Status of project, issues of concern, and compliance with respective schedules and license agreements." This is what it says in the Casino License Agreement, but we wanna put it in the law, so that we demand that they report to this legislative body, because as you know, we are not privy to the D-PAC report that is given directly to the governor. And before we can make a reasonable, justified decision, I think I wanna know these questions and these license requirements and issues. I so move for the passage of the pro-amendment that I provided to all the members.
Any second to the motion offered?
Mr. President, obviously, there is no intent to consider inputs for this budget. I'm going to ask, what are we doing by our action today? We have chosen to relinquish our authority to pass a Commonwealth Budget Plan. We have relinquished the power to authorize the governor's budget proposals. We pretty much gave up. With this document in front of us, we're relinquishing our power as the second branch of government and giving the governor hundred percent of the legislative power of the purse. All we managed to do was make sure that the legislature did not get any funding reduction and ensure that no one can reprogram our legislative money while other government programs and public services were severely caught. By passing this budget as is, we are effectively removing the check and balances of our government. We might as well rename the legislative branch of the CNMI as the Department of Legislation Holding under the Office of the Governor. In other words, let's shut down this legislature right now. I thank you.
Recognize Senator Ju.
Mr. President, I'd like to offer a motion to amend page nineteen.
Proceed with your amendment.
And to include on line twelve, Northern Maranas Island Judiciary. This section shall not apply to the NMI Judiciary, Public School System, and the Northern Maranas College.
And you're referring after the word where?
On page nineteen, line twelve. And it should read, this section shall not apply to the NMI Judiciary, Public School System, and the Northern Maranas College. So move.
Discussion on the motion offered by Senator Ju.
Ready.
Ready? The motion is to insert the word on line twelve after the word "the" NMI Judiciary, and Public School System. Judiciary, comma, Public School System, and the Northern Maranas College, is that correct?
That's correct.
Discussion on the motion? Ready? Enter. We're voting on the amendment.
Senator Cruz?
Yes.
Senator Habsinider?
Good.
Senator Gisomar?
Awer.
Senator Manglonya? Senator Kiruga? Senator Sablon?
Yes.
Senator Santos? Senator Manglonya?
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Good.
Mr. President, of seven members voting yes, one absent.
We have seven members voting yes on the amendment to include NMI Judiciary. Hereby passes the proposed amendment offered by Vice President Ju. Floor Leader.
Mr. President, Mr. President. I move to dissolve into the committee of the whole, so that our fiscal analyst, Mr. Dimapon, can go through the exercise of explaining the mechanics in the distributions on the additional funds identified, so move.
Okay, there's a motion, and then seconded to resolve into the committee of the whole to allow Mr. David Dimapon to provide a highlight of what the Senate did with this House Bill in the form of SD One. Now this time, I ask Sergeant Arm to escort Mr. Dimapon. At this time, I'd like to appoint the floor leader to be the chair of this committee of the whole. I applaud you. We saw one another last decade.
Mr. Dimapon, before you start, I would like to recognize first the Chairman of the Fiscal Affairs Committee.
Thank you, floor leader. This was Marcino Dave. As everyone knows, the concurrent resolution that came out in the product of the Senate further suspended some of the earmarks. And as a result of that, we were able to comply with the twenty-five percent migration of funds to PSS. And of course, we were able to facilitate some programs as well. But before I get into details, I would like to go ahead and just, you know, allow yourself to to do a brief summary of what transpired during the course of this budget deliberation in the Senate. Go ahead, Dave, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening to everyone. Let me give you the true picture of what really transpired during the exercise in the Senate budget deliberation. First of all, I wanna point out that from the House version, the general fund available for appropriation was paid at approximately eighty-two point six million dollars. Then this body decided to suspend five earmark accounts, namely solid waste, group health life insurance, CIQ, MVA, and MPOT interest. Accounted approximately thirteen point eight million dollars. So if we add the thirteen point eight million plus the eighty-two point six, it gives us ninety-six point four million dollars for the general fund for this body to appropriate. On top of that, you also have to add DTL of approximately four point five million dollars. So overall appropriation for this body, for FY twenty-twenty-one, is a little bit over a hundred and one million dollars. And here's what happened. Out of the thirteen point eight million dollars, members and chairman and Mr. President, we took out twenty-five percent of that for PSS, and that accounted to approximately three point four million dollars. The rest of that thirteen point eight million dollars goes into the schedule A. And out of that thirteen point eight million dollars, discounting the share of PSS of three point four million dollars, approximately one point five million dollars we put into the pot for redistribution to other entities or activities in the CNMI government that needed additional funding. On top of that, we look into the Department of Finance. We noticed that there is a revolving fund, which is called the CIQ Reimbursement Fund, approximately seven point five million dollars, a balance as of June thirty, twenty-twenty. That money is actually cash. Remember that a revolving fund and an earmark account is different because an earmark is basically, the money hasn't yet been realized, it's just a projection. Whereas a revolving fund, the accounting of the collections and expenditure has occurred back when that account was actually established. So we have a cash sitting there of approximately seven point five million dollars. So this body, from the Chairman and the members of the committee, decided to take three point two million dollars out of that seven point five and reallocated for the Department of Finance. And the allocation of the Department of Finance that sits in schedule A of three point two million dollars, we put it together in the pot, along with that one point five million dollars that we have already identified from the original earmark total of thirteen point eight million dollars. Next exercise, we look into the account of the CHCC Medical Referral, approximately four point four million dollars, it's already allocated, sitting in schedule A. We decided that we will fund the medical referral offices from the governor's side, both the admin and the service of approximately one point six. Out of the four point four, we would have to take out one point six, and then also, we decided to fund cancer fund, fifty thousand dollars. Now, from three point, and four point four, less one point six, less fifty thousand, it gets us down to two point seven million dollars. That money, again, we put together into the pot, along with that one point five, three point two, plus this one, two point seven, totaling approximately seven point four, seven point five million dollars. That's where we play with that money to reallocate to other activities that needed additional funding, such as number one. We gave one million for the house allocation. We gave additional, close to half a million for the Senate allocation. We gave additional hundred fifty-six thousand dollars for the House and Senate jersey. We gave approximately four hundred some thousand to the judicial branch. We gave approximately three hundred some thousand to NMTI, or close to about an additional of an additional hundred thousand, so close to about a little bit over four hundred some thousand to NMTI. We gave hundred twenty-six thousand for the governor's discretionary account, as well as the Lieutenant Governor of seventy-six thousand. We gave ROTA one point three million dollars, Tinian one point eight. We gave the judicial branch, I'm sorry, the Attorney General, a little bit over four hundred some thousand. So the rest are very minimal, and that's where that seven point four million dollars was distributed. Now, let's take a look at Tinian and ROTA, for example. For Tinian, the bulk of this is from payroll, personal costs. I look at the weight of the governor proposal on the number of NOPS for Tinian.
So can I just interject with regards to the allocation? And before we get there, can you articulate the cuts that were made during the fiscal year twenty-twenty? The so-called proportionate cuts, and what are the effects of the, in discussion? First and Second Senatorial District in discussion as compared to the third?
Based on the statistics that we obtained from OPM, and I wanna relate this from the governor's proposal on the number of NOPS. For ROTA, this is coming from the governor's proposal. Number of NOPS reported from the governor's revised body proposal was two hundred ninety. We weigh that out of the three thousand two hundred eighty-two, its share is about nine percent. Now, from OPM statistics, this is including the furloughed and terminated employees. There were eighty-eight employees furloughed and terminated out of the five hundred thirteen total population, and that accounted to seventeen percent. And that seventeen percent impact on the number furloughed and terminated is about an increase of forty-two FTEs, or an increase of eight percent, and that's what happened to ROTA. Now let's relate this to Tinian. Tinian, under the governor's proposal, if we weighed it out, out of the total population, Tinian accounted for two hundred sixty-two employees out of the population of three thousand two hundred eighty-two. So Tinian's share there is eight percent. Now when we look at what happened with Tinian on furlough and terminated, there were hundred and four employees terminated with a weight of twenty percent out of the five hundred thirteen. So Tinian was increased on top of its eight percent, it was increased, a number of six hundred, sixty-three employees were increased, or twelve percent impact. So now when we relate this to the budget for Tinian and ROTA, under ROTA, we added thirty-four employees out of this forty-two that it was overly stated. And that is to recapture the inequity between Tinian, ROTA, and Saipan, as well as Tinian. Tinian, we had to recapture approximately sixty-three NOPS because the disparity is not fair within the executive branch and Tinian. So we had to add back approximately fifty employees to recover this inequity of furlough and termination. And as a result, we ended up at one point three million dollars for Tinian and for ROTA, and an additional one point eight million dollars for Tinian. And I wanna also point out that it's not only on the payroll side that we experienced disparity. Also, we experienced that some Also, we experienced that some activities in the RODA and Tinian municipalities from the operational side were not adequately uh, budgeted. So we gave additional funding for those activities as well. Thank you, Stu.
Thank you, Dave. Mr. President, Mr. President, are you? Are you back to you?
Any other member that would like to join into discussion or have any comments or questions to Mr. Dimapal? If no one would like to have ask any questions, I move to rise up to our plenary session. Now we're back to our plenary session.
Mr. President, we're back into the plenary session.
Uh, thank you, Flo Flo Leader and Mr. Chairman. So I believe now the uh, the uh, analysis that the uh, fiscal analyst has presented before the members and the audience will clearly underline now, underlying the adjustment on the budget adjustment. And that is why we are moving forward with House Bill Twenty-One, this one. Uh, two, four, and the four, or SD one? Or SD two, sorry.
Mr. President?
I recognize.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President.
Before I recognize, can we rise back to the?
Yeah, all right, we're back in it.
We're back already, okay.
May I, Mr. President?
I recognize now, Senator.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to further highlight the some of the inclusion of the Senate and as part of this.
If I may, first, Chair, I can excuse now the uh, uh, Dave unless you guys want further clarification?
We're good.
Okay, so, okay, Dave, thank you. Oh, you may proceed, the vice.
Thank you, Mr. President. And again, because of the obvious situation and with respect to the the uncertainty or not necessarily the uncertainty, but because of what transpired during the fiscal year, uh, I want to also highlight that some of the suggestive provision that we included is the reporting requirements and we even articulated as to which part of the month in the coming in the coming fiscal year. And similarly to last year's budget, we include some of those provisions again for all the reasons so that we can, the legislature can be guided with regards to the the funding, fund, funding or revenue situation as we progress forth so that we can be better informed in the event that the necessary reduction should transpire. I am, I would also like to to uh, to note that the it's important that we note this that because it's a legislative responsibility that we place some uh, um, provisions in in the bill to address the the in the event that there is a vacancy after so many X amount of time after March fifteen, at least forty-five days, then if it does, if it's not filled, it goes into Business Unit fifteen ninety-five, otherwise known as General Fund Deficit Reduction. Furthermore, Mr. President, um, inclusive with this effort, the remaining uh, one percent uh, unencumbered or unobligated balance uh, for OPA uh, for the remainder of the fiscal year, come end of fiscal year next year, the remaining unencumbered balance shall go into uh, General Fund Deficit Reduction, Business Unit fifteen ninety-five. And there's this one provision that the committee had exercised and had decided to include, and that is if there's any uh, tax uh, cover over as a result of some federal employees working here in the CNMI through the course of the fiscal year, if there's any anything old to the CNMI that that particular fiscal uh, or financial realization should also go to the same account that indicated earlier. I also like to point out, Mr. President, that as of as uh, as we deliberate on the budget, one of the things that we took to heart, and other members can chime in on this, is the importance of funding the the local match for Medicaid program. As we all know, uh, there's been a an increase, potential increase or an increase, an opportunity for us to get uh, millions of dollars in uh, from the the federal share. But it only takes for for the CNMI to do to provide so in this in the the share or our share of 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 the percentage. So with that, we are pleased to uh, provide some uh, provisions in this budget mainly page thirty-six, uh, giving the director of uh, Medicaid Agency some flexibility, some guiding guidance and and working document to uh, administer the program, inclusive of trying to match the the uh, the the CNMI share of up to at least six million dollars. We tried, uh, we were about there. Uh, so I would like to just point those things out because it's important that we we note that the exercise is not only to try to gain authorized additional appropriation to to the agencies that Dave, our fiscal analysts have enumerated, first, second, first sec, first and first and second senatorial district and 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 the other branches. But it's also important to note that because of of that exercise, we're able to migrate some of these funds and uh, to the much-needed program, uh, budget programs for fiscal year twenty twenty. So are you back, Mr. President?
If I may, yeah.
Go ahead, Bruce.
Chair, the the meeting the matching of six million on Medicaid, what would translate in terms of the amount to be to be received?
We're we stand to receive approximately sixty million dollars.
And if we do not meet that?
Then we risk not getting that particular.
I just want to make sure that everybody understand why it's important that we meet that threshold in order for us to continue to receive the sixty million uh, anticipated assistance to enable our innocent people to uh, have the opportunity to uh, leverage their their medical assistance from that entity. And uh, before we move on, uh, maybe it's good to clarify under the present resources uh, for PSS under twenty-five percent, how much have the Senate uh, worked into putting additional funding uh, uh, to P to PSS? On the exercise that the committee have done, uh, how much the committee have come up to assist PSA, uh, PSS with the uh, uh, budget that we received from the House of Representatives?
Thank you, Mr. President. As a result of that exercise of further um, suspending those earmarks, we were able to shift additional three point seven million dollars, which which gave them a bottom line of what, twenty-four million dollars for fiscal year twenty twenty-one. So what we received from the House version is about twenty million dollars. We were able to to shift, as a result of that exercise, we were able to shift at least uh, about three point seven, three point eight, or at least a little bit over near that, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you, Chair.
And Bruce, uh, before I yield back, allow me to to just kind of highlight one more particular because it's a concern that was raised because of the the Senate's action on suspending the MVA HOT earmark. Uh, we did not displace the employees. We merely take that as a and broken it down and we took the twenty-five percent of that to and gave it to PSS. And the remaining, we made sure that we funded the employees for the for the year. Although I know that it represents roughly about one point seven uh, million dollars, one point six three seven to be exact, uh, that is the projection. But I want to say this, that through efforts by your committee, we also recognize that they do have cash in bank, MVA approximately five point seven million dollars. That is not factored into this. And also, they are to be given a total of ten point eight six two million dollars from the CDBGDR that's set to uh, uh, take effect sometime this fiscal year, as I gathered some of this information, of which that ten point eight, seven point five million dollars is for marketing and promotional activity. And inclusive, Mr. President, uh, this grant from the technical assistance program for US Department of Interior, they are are set to receive approximately uh, two termini- but two hundred uh, two hundred mil- thousand dollars from technical assistance. So there's there's a pool of funding stream that is coming to to play here, Mr. President. And I must say, if and when we hope that we can get to the other side of this pandemic and we open our borders uh, to receive, continue receiving, uh, again, to resume the the tourism industry, allowing flights to come in. But I must say that, let's say, for example, we we do open it clearly and we're crossing our fingers that we can get to the other side of this, defying the experts. If they receive over four billion dollars, there's high probability that that money will revert back to their uh, their uh, function as the HOT is intended. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you for that, very informative, no? Misses? Any other members? Recognize, Senator Santos.
Well, thank you, Mr. President. And so, um, fiscal year twenty twenty-one is just one of those years where's where there's less general funds available for appropriation as a result of previous year's natural atrocities coupled with the advent of a notorious pandemic that paralyzes the entire world. However, by your committee on fiscal affairs, headed by our good Senate Vice President and committee members, creativity in identifying and suspending earmarks. The level of appropriation increased as shown in the House concurrent resolution adopted by both houses. Hence, as echoed by our good Vice President, our public school systems appropriation increased by over four million for a total of about twenty-four million. And although our public school system receives federal fundings or grants, the use of those fundings come with a specific uses and purposes. Um, again, just echoed by our good Vice Senate President, distribution of allotments for NMC as well as our NMTI were increased. NMC, uh, to provide the necessary post-secondary education, academics and other degree programs. NMTI, a public cooperation created by statute to provide the necessary vocational training and and skills that would ultimately improve our local workforce. Uh, similarly, as echoed by our good Senate Vice President, appropriation for medical uh, medical referral services was also provided to meet the the financial demands for the for our growing medical referral patients outside the Commonwealth. It is also important to note, as he has echoed, appropriation was also provided for medical services to meet the local matching obligation for our CNMI Medicaid reimbursements. And so furthermore, the Senate increased allotments to both the first and the second senatorial districts. As some of us may know, during the proportionate reduction in the allotments that transpired several months ago, RODA and Tinian was were greatly hit, uh, impacting the delivery of public services and programs. This was echoed also by our fiscal analyst. Our fiscal analyst even mentioned that a certain percentage of our municipalities' employees were terminated, including a certain percentage of our civil service employees were furloughed. Um, some of us may know that employment opportunities on these islands depend largely on our CNMI government due to the limited employment opportunities that our private sector provides. And this, including the high cost of airfares, freight and handling, goods and commodities, supplies, make the standard cost of living extremely high in these two islands. It is equally important to know that when we allocate funding to the municipality, it does not only cover the office of the mayor. It also consists of our entire local departments, agencies, and even other offices. Fortunately and just recently, RODA and Tinian were provided funding to recall some, but not all of its employees who were terminated or furloughed for only during the first quarter of fiscal year twenty twenty-one. And this is just another justification or reason that RODA and Tinian's allotment were increased so that these employees will continue their employment for the second, third, and fourth quarter um, of fiscal year twenty twenty-one. The proportionate reduction in allotment affected those receiving funding from the general fund. That even led the CNMI Supreme Court Justice to react during the fiscal summit this year by saying the drastic cut that was made to the judiciary, judiciary pierced the heart of the courts. And as a result of that, and to safeguard any future proportionate reductions, section four, all four was added in this administrative provision of our budget as a financial savior or safety net to all branches, departments, agencies, and instrumentalities. And, uh, Mr. President, if I may, uh, make some comments.
You may continue, Senator Santos.
Thank you, Mr. President. And this is in reference to Senator Manglonia's floor amendment, uh, which seeks to provide two hundred fifty thousand dollars for internal medical referral, fifty thousand dollars for students' housing, stipends for students attending NMC, and so forth. And so, Mr. President, you are a member of our RODA delegation. And on several occasions, our mayor of RODA questions our delegation with regards to the expenditure authority of funds for the local municipalities and departments. And I recalled during our recent meeting with the mayor, he said that he would address the letter to the Attorney General to seek the Attorney General's opinion, um, if the office of the mayor uh, has the authority or or the, yes, the authority for expenditure of funds over all these local departments. And I think the Attorney General responded to that and ruled that, yes, the mayor of RODA has the expenditure authority of over all local municipalities pursuant to amendment twenty-five. And maybe Constable Bermudas, um, would would that also be your your legal opinion?
Yes.
Thank you, Constable Bermudas. And so although the allotment for the operations of the mayor of RODA show a a huge amount, these funds are for the purposes of funding local departments and agencies and other programs under the municipality, providing the expenditure authority for the mayor of RODA. And so the floor amendment introduced by our good Senator Manglonia and our good chairman for the RODA delegation may may perhaps be communicated to the mayor of RODA for the use of some of these funds under his, um, uh, proposed, you know, for for his operations to 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 fund these locally created programs. Um, if if, um, you know, this this fund remains intact after the enactment of the fiscal year uh, twenty twenty-one budget and again, providing the expenditure authority to the mayor of RODA. And I'd just like to note that in Senator Manglonia's floor amendment, um, there was, you know, um, no indication, uh, no no mention as to who the expenditure authority would be.
I just want to correct you. There's no floor amendment of Senator Manglonia.
Oh, okay, that's right, Mr. President. I stand to be corrected because it was never a seconded. But but then again, you know, for the record, But, but then again, you know, for the record, there was no mention of who the expenditure authority would be. And, um, so to continue, Mr. President, if I may.
You may proceed.
Thank you. And so, um, it is hoped that those, those departments, agencies, or entities whose requests were made either in oral or writing, perhaps one of this is Senator Manglonia's proposal amendment were not met in this budget or considered when there is a supplemental budget. And since, and I like to, to exit by saying this, that since time is of the essence, we humbly ask our House counterpart to facilitate action by accepting our Senate version of fiscal year twenty twenty one budget to avert a, a government shutdown. And if not, and the budget goes to our conference, then let's burn, burn the midnight oil as our government employees deserve better from us, their elected leaders. Uh, Mr. President, I would be remiss if I would not extend gratitude to our legal consuls for their legal advices, opinions, uh, including crafting of provisions, amendment, revisions, uh, also, you know, working hand in hand with our legislative assistants, um, our fiscal analysts for ensuring that, uh, the numbers are accurate, that one is one and one plus one is two and not three, and that the balance, the, the budget is balanced. And also for sergeant alarms for ensuring logistics are in order. And most especially also, you know, to our good Senate Vice President and all the members in this committee. Uh, thank you very much. And I highly encourage all our members to please let us support the passes of this, uh, Senate version of this budget. Thank you, Mr. President. And thank you also, Mr. President, for your leadership, your untiring leadership.
Thank you, Senator Santos, for a well-stated statement on defending the Senate version on House Bill twenty one one two four. Recognize Senator Benning.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I'd be remiss to, um, if I didn't give any remarks, um, finally after before we pass this, this version, you know, after so many days and hours of work. Um, I'd like to give much appreciation to, uh, our fiscal affairs members and to the leadership of our chairman, Senator Jude Hofschneider, and most especially to the staff who took part in this very important exercise. Since August thirteen, when we received, uh, the copy from the House, we agreed to place all other business, Senate business on hold to decide our Commonwealth's, how our Commonwealth would move forward, um, throughout this fiscal year twenty one with as much comfort as we could present in this Senate version of the budget. For all that are watching, we spent hours each day for the past month deliberating, sharing ideas, learning from each other, and making needed changes to craft a balanced and workable version, um, that is in front of us today. As we head into the tail end of this year, we all felt the tremendous effects of the unprecedented period of time. We have all endured in the past five years. We acknowledge the stresses of our community and thank them for their patience in allowing us to perform our duties as legislators, the duties that they bestowed upon us. Mr. President, I appreciate the angle and approach your Senate Fiscal Affairs Committee took in this budget exercise. We had to be creative to identify additional resources within the governor's submission to ensure that critical government services continue, especially during this time of crisis. We had to collect accurate information for the deliberations and to make our final decision in this version. Your Fiscal Affairs Committee had to acknowledge all the factors and priorities in creating this version of the budget. Our good Chairman of Fiscal Affairs, Senator Jude, mentioned that the actions that were taken were very untraditional, but I must say, a very innovative approach to provide the needed funds to the priorities we recognized during this exercise. In reference to other proposed floor amendments offered by Senator Manglonia, Mr. President, I'd like to state for the record that through this exercise, the committee addressed all the concerns brought forth in the Senator's floor amendments. Maybe not in the same language as stated in his proposed amendments, but these concerns were addressed in general. Also in reference to Senator Manglonia's unfair statement or question of what we are trying to accomplish today in this bill, that statement, Mr. President, is very unfair to the members and most especially to the staff in all their efforts, hours of work to come up with this creative version of this budget. In the body of this budget bill states several safety nets and control mechanisms that would answer his concerns in his proposed amendments, also to ensure that the provisions take effect upon this bill becoming law. The unlimited authority to reprogram funds in fiscal year twenty one given to the governor by this version may be for the benefit of the agencies within the executive branch, should these entities recognize any challenges and needs. In closing, Mr. President, the angle and approach of your Fiscal Affairs Committee's version of this budget allows us to sustain ourselves in this coming fiscal year until we finally return back to our normal lives. Um, thank you also for your leadership, Mr. President, and allowing us to do our duties and entrusting us and, um, uh, giving us the time and, um, cooperation that's needed for us to perform our duties. Thank you, Mr. President and members.
Thank you, Chairman Benning. Senator Cruz, recognize.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, Mr. President, I would like to, uh, acknowledge the, uh, the leadership of the Vice President on Fiscal Affairs Committee of the outstanding, together with the members, the common of the Senate, uh, version, Senate product. I think the other men, members have said, uh, they, they have the, their support on the, on the bill, and their, and their comments are well said. And I, Mr. President, nothing much to say about the Senate version. I'm ready to support it, so that will not delay any further. Uh, and I know that we've been giving, uh, with the, the budget was transmitted to the Senate on a very limited time. And, uh, we don't have time to further delay this, uh, process, uh, as we all know that uh, the time is of the essence. And I don't know whether the House will support it. I know that it supports the first, the administrative provision, but I heard that there's some concern on the, on Schedule A. And I hope that they support, they, they support once we pass this, so we'll not delay any further and create a shutdown. Uh, been to that, uh, incident that passed in the seventeenth later than when there's, there's a shutdown. Even though you try your very best to, to support the, the request of, of the department and other essential, uh, entities, uh, we all, uh, we all know the blame in the end, at the end of the day. So, uh, Mr. President, I will not comment any further in regards to the, the budget that the, the Senate, uh, the final, uh, product. I'm ready to support the bill. And, uh, I ask also the general public, the, all the departments for their patient understanding. As we all know that we have limited resources and all that, uh, some of the department requested, uh, uh, for more, but, uh, because of our limited resources, uh, we came up with the final product of the Senate. And, uh, and I know that was mentioned about the, the biggest chunk of this, uh, of the, the money that we, we provided for the island of Tinian. That's what was mentioned by the fiscal analysts, uh, Tinian and Rhoda were caught the most. And it's very, I cannot sit back and say that I will not fight for what is, not, not what is not right. And I believe that when there is a budget, uh, crisis, I think we should cut it fairly to all the senatorial district and, uh, and if, if they choose and be selective in who, who to be caught the most, I think that's not fair. So, uh, to all those that are listening, why Tinian and Rhoda be given more? Because they were being, they were being caught more. And we're just putting back some of it. It's not all of it. We're just putting back, especially after the, the, the devastation of a typhoon that hit Tinian hundred percent. And it is very, it's a shame to cut the island when it's still, still recovering. It's still recovering from the, the typhoon. And again, with this, uh, unprecedented pandemic that he does, it is more worse. And I believe it's, it is fair that we should give back, uh, some of those funding that been cut, especially uh, with N O Ps. I believe that during that time, when Tinian was requested to submit, they were caught by planning a budget at a two point nine million dollars on, on furlough and termination. So I think, uh, with that huge cut, uh, I just, I think it's my responsibility as a representative from the island of Tinian not to ask the whole, the whole, uh, uh, funding that's been cut, but at least for the municipality to be, to function so that the mayor can continue to deliver the, the best services to the people on the island of Tinian. So with that, Mr. President, I hope that it is not because we're, we gave Tinian a one point six, one point seven million dollar. That means we, we got more of the, uh, of the funding that we, that this body, uh, found from different sources. It is just we're putting it back and to make it, uh, you know, so that the municipality can continue to function appropriately. So with that, I, I thank you. And, and again, the members of this, uh, fiscal fair, I, I really appreciate all the hard work and the staff for coming out with the, and agreeing with the, the request for the second senatorial district. Again, I'm Don Puig, Mr. President.
Thank you. Thank you, uh, Chairman Cruz. I used to look one of our senators sitting right across you, uh, right beside you, uh, Vice, and I almost forgot that he is now behind you. So I'd like now to take the privilege to recognize our hardworking senator, Senator Sixto. You have anything, uh, to, to say regarding the bill under discussion for the Senate action today?
Yes, Mr. President.
You may proceed.
First of all, Mr. President, thank you very much to you and to your leadership. And I hope I'm coming in clear. Thank you to Senator June as well, uh, for the committee and the staff for putting this bill together. Am I coming in okay, Senator President?
Yes, you're coming in loud and clear.
Thank you very much. So now what I'd like to say also is just briefly state that I truly appreciate the amendments that the Senator Paul was trying to attempt to, for us to recognize. And I would like him to understand that it's not that we don't agree with him or do not want him to change. I believe his, uh, proposals are novel. However, at the current moment, and I will elaborate, I would like to say that the way the budget is right now, we can say that it's an art form or a product from the Senate. And whatever you do to add anything into it, uh, would be an awesome idea. Anybody's idea would be great and awesome, but it would be nothing more than just another Picasso abstract artwork. And I'm saying that for a reason because the question was, what are we doing? What are we going to do? What are we expected to do in this budget? Well, here's the issue. The currency in the economy is on a slope. And currently, if we pass this budget, the C N M I economy under budget will be suppressed from sliding backwards on this slope, which think of an economic slope for growth. This budget, all it's going to do is help us suppress any backward movement of the C N M I economy. That's why what we've done in here is basically took care of every areas we can to help and assist the C N M I to stay afloat. The next word, and I, and I wanted to stress on this, what's the next word? Work is forced, applied to an, an object to move in a direction, and that direction is forward. And, Mr. President, your committee is more concerned about the next job that we need to do after this budget. This budget is only a suppression. We need to get together to start allowing and applying force to the C N M I economy so that there'll be an upward movement in our economy. And, uh, that's where the help is. And any other inclusion of amendments or recommendations or bright ideas is not going to make this economy move forward. We need to pass this budget so that we can work together with the House and our business communities to find and work with, uh, solutions that we identified to start moving the economy forward so that all the other people that are affected by the pandemic, all the other people that are furloughed can be added back into this economy. And now, Mr. President, I hope I'm making sense, but I'm trying to make people understand that this budget is only, it is right now, it's just helping the C N M I to be stagnant and not fall backward some more. What we need to do is pass this budget so we can move forward.
Uh, thank you, Chairman Sixto. Uh, everybody heard your statement. And before we move for the passes of, uh, House Bill twenty one, that's one two four, S D two, I'd like to recognize our floor leader, if he's got anything to add regarding the discussion of, uh, this, uh, uh, bill that the Senate did.
Yeah, Mr. President, I'm ready to vote on the bill.
Okay. Before we, before I ask the clerk to call the roll, I, as your Senate Presiding Officer, would like to extend also my sincere appreciation to the chairman and the committee, our legal counsel, and all the A O B staff who in one way or another dedicated their time to ensure that what the committee is doing are rightfully stated without any legal question. And thank you, legal counsel, for, uh, being with the committee all the time to ensure that the language meet legal sufficiency as well. I'd like also to extend to Dave, the A O B fiscal analyst, our appreciation for his dedicated time to, uh, ensure communication with the respective, uh, department and to get the correct information in what the Senate was trying to, uh, do in reinventing different ways of trying to meet the operation, uh, of the government. And I understand that, uh, House Bill twenty one, one two four, S D two is not a perfect bill, but like what Senator Sixto said, this will help suppress the government from, uh, going back to a more, uh, unknown, uh, uh, result if budget is not, uh, uh, being done of, of what the Senate did in identifying other means to, uh, ensure that, uh, it is within the legal bound to do what the Senate did in moving some of the, uh, revolving fund to, uh, assist in helping, uh, those critical department and, uh, agencies as well. So I hope I didn't miss anybody to, uh, extend my appreciation and, uh, I just hope that our counterpart will realize the importance of the Senate work. And by agreeing with the administrative, administrative provision, this will men, this will direct the applicability of Schedule A, how it's going to be done. And, and with that being said, again, thank you to our, my members of the House, uh, I mean Senate Fiscal Committee, our A O B staff, our legal counsel, our Sergeant, our arm, and of course, our hardworking clerk here. Thank you. And with that said, uh, I'd like to ask Madam Clerk to call the roll now for the passes on House Bill twenty one, one two four, S D one, and S D two. Oh, and before we do that, I hope that the judicial, uh, branch will now appreciate that, uh, the Senate. And you may inform Chief Justice and Presiding Judge Narra that the Senate that the Senate will not let them, you know, forgotten, no, no, uh, brands of government that we like to ensure and work with them and the other brands of government. So with that, Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Senator Cruz? Senator Hofschneider?
Good.
Senator Iggy Somar?
Awar.
Senator Kiriba? Senator Sablon?
Yes.
Senator Santos? Mr. President?
Yes.
Mr. President, seven members voting yes, two absent.
Okay, we have two mem, uh, seven members voting yes for the final passes of House Bill twenty-one, that's one, two, four, in the form of S D two hereby passes the Senate on its final reading. Thank you. Floor leader.
If, uh, there's no announcement, uh, Mr. President, I move, uh, down to item R, adjournment. And I move to adjourn today's session, subject to the call of the chair.
Okay, there's a motion for adjournment on our special session, subject to the call of the chair. Those in favor of the motion say aye, those opposed say nay. Motion carries the Senate Special Session hereby stand adjourned, subject to the call of the chair. Thank you.